Uh, welcome everyone. It's December fifteenth for four thirty-two or something like that. Yeah, four thirty-two. Uh, meeting of Gresham Board of Commissioners. I'd asked that the clerk would call the roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Lambright.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Smith. Sam?
He's there. I see him.
Yeah, yeah, here.
Wake up Sam.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay, everybody's all present and we're counting for it. We'll have our vocation and we'll stand for the pledge. Well, first, how many, Father, we just thank you for this day and this time of year that we come together. We ask, Father, you continue to bless our troops overseas and at home. Bless our first responders, Father, who are reacting daily to our pandemic. And we just would just a special blessing upon them, Father. We ask all these things in your son's precious name. Amen. We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Okay. Are any additions or deletions to our agenda? Having none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
For.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Ask the clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Uh, Matt, do we have anybody waiting for a public comment?
I I do believe we have one individual that wanted to make public comment tonight.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Please introduce yourself.
Hey, Matt, I'm going to speak at the end. Okay, this is Sheriff.
Oh, okay. I'm not seeing anyone else, son.
Oh. Guess it's just you, Sheriff.
I'll speak at the later, uh, public comment, George, after everybody's done.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, no problem. We're all set then, Matt?
Yep, we're all set.
Okay. Consideration of consent calendar, board minutes, communication recommendations from committees.
Move we accept the consent calendar. Tim?
For.
Any discussion? Ask the clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Brings us to our administrators' report.
Yeah, hello, everybody. Um, I think that I don't even need to ask Tim to know that it is the administrators' report that he will miss the most. Um, uh, Tim, just know that you can always tune in. We do this near the beginning, so I'll do this and then you can just leave. But anyway. So, um, just a few things. Uh, Chris can discuss it in greater depth, but audit preparation continues in the Financial Services Unit. That's keeping them pretty darn busy and it tends to always each year spoil their holiday plans and, uh, because it's very difficult to take time off. But the auditors return for their onsite work during the full first full weekend in January and the materials that they have to provide are due at the, uh, December thirty-first. So hence the spoiling of, uh, leave times during that period. But next, I understand that the Michigan Legislature is looking again at amendments to the Open Meetings Act. I haven't heard anything today and I don't know that and what sort of sausage it will end up being, but they are taking another look at that. Um, and, uh, I know that it does relate primarily to the remote or electronic meetings. And as that develops, I'll let you know if it's going to have an impact in the way we are are doing business and have planned to do business over the next year. Uh, COVID continues to take a toll on our workforce as well as the community. We currently have, uh, as I could recall, three people out who are symptomatic and nine who were determined to be close contacts. Uh, so this, for example, it's shut down an entire work unit at the Commission on Aging. So, um, it, uh, it does raise issues for us. In the past, we've had another entire office that got, well, two entire offices that got shut down. And it's not surprising if we have someone in office who, uh, becomes ill, they've had contact with everyone else and and there we go. So, um, I just urge people, please continue in the building and in your lives in general. Observe all of the safety measures and precautions. I sent an email out last week, I think it was last week, to staff and said, among other things, uh, please make good decisions because what you do out there, you bring in here. And, uh, uh, we're, uh, it it's it's just difficult. So, um, uh, let's see, I had mentioned to you last time that we were going to be doing an employee recognition, uh, gesture. It's obviously not going to be a gathering over lunch this year. Um, that we were, we were going to send all employees a letter of thanks, a certificate of service recognizing employees who provided service in some five-year increment and a gift card for use at the many of the, uh, local businesses. I just want to let you know that, um, uh, these have gone out. We've had many, um, communications out from staff communicating their thanks for this. I think this has gone over, uh, quite well. Just want you to have that update. Um, that that really is business. I I, just because I, uh, have the floor for a moment, I do recognize that this is Commissioner Lambright's last meeting with us. Um, and so a word to you. I really can't thank you enough for your service to this community as a commissioner and for your ongoing guidance to me personally. You've been a sounding board and, um, uh, just a, a solid source of of very good advice. I'm going to miss your constantly calm demeanor. Uh, it's been odd to me, but you're constantly consistently calm demeanor and your insanely sharp intellect. Uh, I would guess that if I asked you to divide one million fifty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-three by five, uh, you would have it done before I even finished this sentence. Don't know how you do it, but you've done it every time. You've served on on this board, you've served.
Two oh five one oh seven.
Uh huh. Only the only point I was wrong was that he didn't blurt it out before the end of the sentence. You've served on this bar board, you served on the Parks Committee with the Airport Authority, amazingly, all without a single eye roll. So once again, um, uh, I've I've learned from you. Along with everything else, Tim, you have baffled me and how you've managed to do all of that. But, uh, so it's difficult to, um, with all of this to watch, uh, watch you walk out the door, so to speak. Uh, but I know that I'm not saying goodbye to you, but rather that I'll see you down the road. And, uh, again, just to offer my, uh, professional and personal thanks to you. Uh, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioners Committee reports. Chuck?
I don't have anything, George.
Thank you. It's kind of hard these days. Not very many people are meeting, so it's tough to understand. Uh, Tim?
Uh, Parks and Rec met via Zoom and had a good discussion about the kind of the parameters of how we were going to be doing the grant program. And I'm guessing in the coming months, they'll be bringing something to you, probably the next couple of coming months. Um, of, you know, in terms of a finished document to to look at. Um, we also talked about the Parks Plan and Pete's going to talk to you about that. So, so I won't, uh, I won't spoil his thunder. The, uh, Arcata Township did have a quick meeting. Um, they're not Zoom ready. And they met in the parking lot and just had to take care of a couple of business items. And City of Elma, uh, sadly, as I pointed out, Larry Mott, our beloved City Commissioner, passed away. Um, he probably saw in the paper, but they appointed Nick Piccolo, um, to take his spot. Nick had to resign in order to be appointed because you can't appoint someone who's already on the commission. But they, and there was a real question, some legal questions about how how to do that because it was just an odd situation. But, you know, he was on the commission before and and so I don't think they'll they'll miss a beat. So that's what I got. And thank you, Tracy, for those kind words. That's I appreciate that.
Sam?
Well, we had one parking lot meeting and it was just the same as Tim. They took care of a little business, never went into building. Then they had a phone call last night in, um, uh, oh, um, North Shade Township, and that was just a phone call meeting and there's really nothing there. So that's all I've done.
Right, thank you. Jan?
Well, I would have had, um, several meetings, but, um, they decided to, um, just go and do a little bit of business and not really have a meeting. So, um, I went to Wheeler Township, there was nobody there, and then I called over to Bethany. Um, I usually take cookies to all my townships and they were just getting ready to walk out the door. So, and then I had one today or yesterday and I couldn't be at it because I was at the school. And so we've had a lot of meetings, just, uh, hasn't hit me at the right time and the right day. So, um, I'm thinking probably the first of the year, things get back into, you know, the business part of, um, our meetings. Usually the last meeting of the year is kind of the fun meeting. You get together and chit chat and have cookies and and say, see you next year.
Okay, um, just to add a little bit to, uh, what Tracy said about Commission on Aging. Yeah, their their staff, they had a, they had, they had, uh, someone that came down positive, so they decided to quarantine the whole staff. But kudos to to the staff there. They were so far forward thinking that they had planned on this to happen. So by planning on this to happen, what hap- what they did was they prepared meals ahead and boxed lunches ahead to last them for the ten entire ten days they're going to be quarantined. So kudos to them. They've already got volunteers to drive. They've 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 put everything into into the works. So the people that they serve will never miss a beat. And I just think that's just wonderful that they, we have such a good staff over there that 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 they had contingency plans to take care of the inevitable. And they did. And and just pat them on the back for that. Okay, well, the next thing we do, um, we've got a resolution here for Commissioner Lambright. I'll attempt to get through it as best I can. Um, this is Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two sixty. And it starts out, whereas, like most of the time they do start out, whereas, Tim Lambright has served the Gresham County and its citizens as a county commissioner for eight years. And whereas, as a county commissioner, Tim Lambright has served as a member of the Gresham County Parks and Recreation Commission, playing a key role in its creation of park system that in in the, that is the envy of of counties statewide. And whereas Commissioner Lambright has served as a member of the Airport Authority, helping to continue the airport community, uh, Gresham Community Airport as a resource for recreational pilots and business interests alike and creating a vision for its future. And whereas Commissioner Lambright has served as as an individual resource during contract negotiations with our collective bargaining units with his vast experience on both sides of the table. His calm demeanor, his ability to perform complex arithmetic calculations instantly in his head, which he has proven. Uh, whereas Commissioner Lambright has lent guidance and support to building and grounds, uh, responsible and 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 subs- and sustainable finance, financial systems for Gresham County. And whereas Tim Lambright has applied his expertise in his service of the chair, as Chair of the Finance Committee and Vice Chair of the Board of Commissioners. And whereas his encyclopedic knowledge of Robert's Rules of Order in and in original from eighteen seventy-six and it's in the ten subsequent additions. And assisted and has assisted his fellow board members in the appropriate process of the county business. And whereas Commissioner Lambright has consistently demonstrated selfless service of benefit of his of his community. And whereas Tim Lambright is complete completing his term of service as Gresham County Board of Commissioner. This on December thirty-first, uh, to twenty twenty. And therefore, let it be resolved that all members of the Gresham County Board of Commissioners honor and recognize their colleague, Tim Lambright, and his commitment to the ideals of service to his community and and excellence to government. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Okay.
George, might Tim say a few words?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, after that, I'm I'm kind of speechless, actually. But, uh, you know, I I guess I I would like to just just thank and acknowledge, you know, uh, just a couple of people and I'm sure I'll forget somebody, you know, the, as much as I may have a handful of above-average skills in some areas. You know, the thing I actually appreciate the most about the job is the people, you know, and getting to really understand the great things that our staff does on a daily basis, most of which just kind of happens under the radar. And, you know, I I often kid with George that, you know, we don't get in the paper that much because there are just good things that happen. And, you know, nobody cares as long as good stuff is happening, but good stuff happens because, you know, we've got great staff. And, you know, that's just been a joy, you know, between, you know, administrative staff, our rank and file. Um, you know, when I negotiate and I I I say that I really do appreciate, uh, you know, what our staff does. I really do appreciate what our staff does. And I can say that now. You know, I if I didn't, I could I could tell them because I'm not going to negotiate with them again. But it was, it was true all along. Um, and, you know, as well as, you know, we, you know, the the fantastic job that, uh, you know, that our elected officials do. Um, and and I I also do want to kind of single out George Bailey, you know, you know, as a chair. I've, you know, I've been on the board for a number of years and, you know, we've we've had, you know, solid leadership throughout. And we've had solid leadership when I haven't been on the board. But, you know, George, I think, has just taken it, uh, to to another level. I think it's it's been helpful that he's had a fantastic administrative team that he's gotten in place. Um, and I'm sure that 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 will continue, but it's it's really been a pleasure. Um, you know, I mean, not not everything we do is fun. Um, but, you know, all of it's important and, you know, and sometimes it's as much about not doing the the wrong things as it is about doing the right things. And I think we've avoided doing wrong things. And we've we've done a lot of, uh, good things, uh, for the county and and I'm sure that will continue. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, well, we have a new person on staff, introduction of our new HR person, I think. Is Terry going to do that?
Yes, speaking of, uh, you know, a great administrative team, Terry is going to introduce our new HR officer who's going to try to fill her very big shoes.
Okay.
Okay, we're trying to figure out where to stand here so that you can see. Can you see this?
You're doing good.
Perfect, Terry.
Okay, I would like to introduce Sheila Barnaby. We were lucky enough to hire her as the new HR officer. She comes with much HR experience.
Hey, Terry, 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 will you step back from, uh, behind the, uh, pass the overhang there because there's a lot of echo? Just take a couple of steps back. Yep. If that improves things.
This is Sheila. She's going to be a great addition to the team and I know she'll do great things.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
I didn't I didn't get what her last name was.
I'm sorry, Sheila Barnaby. It's her, when these masks started, Tracy said I had echo under the overhang. So did everybody hear everything else that I said?
Yeah, Sheila Barnaby is her name.
It's Sheila Barnaby. Uh, Sheila comes with, uh, a great deal of HR experience. She's worked for a total of what, six or seven years in our community in HR positions? She has a degree in human resources management. Um, she has, uh, tons of energy and enthusiasm. She's also, um, a community and public servant. She does a great deal of volunteer work in our community. So consider her just be very, we feel, I just feel very lucky to have, uh, Sheila joining our team.
Good.
That's what Terry said with less echo.
Well, welcome to the team.
Yeah.
Yes, congratulations.
Before you leave, Terry, don't leave just yet. Terry, this is your last formal meeting as our HR person. You're soon to take over in the Treasurers Office. And I just want to say thank you so much for helping us as the commissioners, uh, through a lot of situations and and make an understanding. We just appreciate your efforts there and I know that you're going to go on and great things. So just want to say thank you.
Thank you, George. That means a lot.
Yes.
Okay. I think we have Parks and Rec up next. We have Pete on board?
Yeah, I'm right here, George.
Okay.
All right. Hi, guys. Uh, Pete Little, Director of Parks and Recreation. And we have, uh, tonight we have the adoption of our five-year recreation plan that's, uh, on the agenda. And I'll just, I can just take a couple of minutes and go over some of the highlights of that plan. And then if folks have any questions on that, um, I'd be happy to take those questions. Um, obviously, this plan is updated every five years. Uh, we follow the guidelines that are set forth by the Department of Natural Resources. Uh, and this is a plan that helps us decide what types of projects we want to add to the parks, um, any types of programs we might want to have. So, uh, it's a, it's a really important document for us and it guides us in our decision-making. Um, it also, uh, enables us to be eligible for, uh, grants through the Department of Natural Resources, the trust fund, fund grants and the recreation passport grants. Um, so it's it's a, it's an important document. Uh, the the plan itself, hopefully folks have had a chance to look through it. Um, it's been on the, on our website for the last thirty days. Um, the the beginning parts of it is essentially background, information on our parks and our communities, um, demographics of of the park, uh, users, so who's using the parks. Uh, it's also, we look at an assessment of recreational opportunities within the region in our county, an assessment of our park system itself, so what we have in the parks. Um, and then the the big important part of of this plan is that we survey our park users. So we had two ways that we, uh, looked for feedback. We had a survey online, uh, with a, you know, link, um, to a Survey Monkey on our website. And then we also handed out a paper survey in the parks over the summer. So, uh, those surveys were out all summer. This fall, we we, uh, gathered all those results and summarized those. And and with those summaries, we write up our goals and objectives for the parks. And we then create an action plan with a timeline for proposed projects. So, um, you know, some, a lot of the things that people want, obviously, revolved around our beaches and swimming. Uh, folks want access to, you know, clean bathrooms and, um, beachfront areas. Um, they, a lot of stuff about campgrounds and, you know, maybe electrifying campsites, so stuff of that nature. So, um, that's obviously all in the plan and you can see that as you scroll down through that plan. Um, it, when you get to the, towards the end of the plan, you'll see that action plan. And that's where we we lay out, you know, what projects we're going to accomplish and what years. Um, like I said earlier, this plan was available for public review for thirty days. It was on the county website. And then on December ninth, we had a public hearing at our, uh, regularly scheduled Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Uh, we did not have a lot of public comment on it, so I guess I'll take that as, uh, no news is is good news. So people are happy with with the plan and and with the parks. So, um, so after, uh, tonight, if if you guys are happy with it, uh, we'll adopt the plan and then we'll send it on to the Department of Natural Resources for their final approval. And then that approved adopted plan will be on on file with them. So, uh, happy to answer any questions folks have.
Anyone have any questions of Pete? I know he's asking us to approve that plan so he can move forward.
This is Sam Smith. This is just a guide, right? Just kind of a guide to submit to them.
Yeah, it's it's similar to the county, the county plan.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
No, but it but it does help, like, like Pete alluded to, to DNR grants and those types of things. You have to have a county, you have to have a plan, much like the county plan.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, and probably one of the things that we look at is, you know, in terms of, uh, you know, how it guides us is the capital improvement, you know, plans in terms of where are we going to spend our money in terms of significant improvements. And, you know, it's it's obviously better to have a plan for that rather than kind of shoot from the hip. Because, you know, I I think especially as we move forward with this new community grant program, you know, it will be, it'll make sense to coordinate, you know, who's doing what and and then how it all fits together in terms of a true countywide, you know, rec plan. What what I just wanted to add is, and this is something I've mentioned before, but, you know, just, uh, just kudos to Pete. Pete actually prepared the plan. You know, a lot of counties and parks departments will subcontract this out because it is a job. And I often kind of brag to people about how good our Parks Department is at not having to spend money when we don't need to on professional services. We do. I mean, we we hire for professional services, but, you know, we don't probably as nearly as much as as pure, um, Parks and Rec Departments because Pete just has a lot of skills and so he was able to put this together. And it's kind of the same thing, I'm guessing, when they bring the grant, the final grant proposal to you, that at some point we may want to run that through, you know, the county attorney. You know, that's something that we we're just going to put together in-house. And, you know, we've we've got the benefit of other counties like Ingham spending a lot of money on consultants and lawyers, you know, to 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 kind of pave the way for us. So, but kudos to Pete for getting that document together because it's a pretty impressive document, I think.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have some questions, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to go to one of your.
Go ahead, Jan.
Oh, okay. Uh, Pete, I have some questions, but I'm going to try to go to one of your meetings. When is the next meeting you have? Where's it at?
Yeah, so so our next meeting will be the third Wednesday of of January. So we we meet at five thirty on the third Wednesdays. And and I'm I'm guessing it'll be a, it'll be a Zoom meeting, Jan. So, so I can, I'll make sure I get you that information, but it'll be available on the website also.
Okay, then. Yeah, um, yeah, if you, uh, maybe send me a text or something. Probably easier with my phone number. Okay, thanks, Pete.
Yeah, no problem.
Make a motion about this plan.
Support?
Moved and supported. Is there any other discussion? Ask the clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Okay, thanks, Pete.
All right, thanks, guys.
Moving along, uh, is our drain commissioner on board? Bernie? Don't have Bernie. He was.
I'm here, George.
Okay.
I just had, uh, get Matt to turn me on there.
Okay.
Um, Board, what I have in front of you here is, uh, um, Resolution pledging the full faith and credit of the county for, uh, the number ninety-six county drain project. It, um, it's a resolution that I'm, you know, I'm assuming it was in your packet and I need the, after you, uh, and I asked that you approve it and authorized the clerk to sign it. It's, the ninety-six district's quite a large district for the county. It's, uh, about twenty-two thousand acres, I believe, it's shy of that. Um, Pine River, Sumner, Seville, um, Arcade a little bit. But, uh, it drains a lot of the north part of the county there. I don't know if you guys have any other questions for me, but I I'll do my best.
Well, is that, is that in the Pine River drainage district?
Yes. Well, George, it comes into the Honey Hill Creek there, um, what you're familiar with. Um, this is the drain that outlets into that.
I see, I see. So, so do you have a, I didn't, I I don't have the, I don't have, I'm not, I don't have the resolution. I see, I see. So, so you have a, I didn't, I don't have the, I don't, I'm not, I don't have the resolution in hand. So was there a amount on there or anything?
Eight oh five.
Well, George, see, we're still in the middle of our prepayment process right now. I think Jenny told me we had about a hundred and five thousand that's been prepaid. So as far as exact amount, that's still coming to the end of the prepayment period, which is going to be the twenty-third of December.
Okay.
But you're authorized, and I do believe the total amount of the comp of cost is what they have on here, so it'd be approved in the whole. But, yeah, we've received a hundred, like you say, a hundred and five thousand in prepayments already.
Okay.
So, this, typically, we do this to get better interest rates. At the rates we're at right now, I don't know how much better we'll actually get. But it does, there is certain lending institutions, and including, I talked to Cory at Commercial about this, and this gives us more favor in borrowing. And like I say, some lending institutions are kind of requesting it now. It used to be at the million-dollar threshold. I think because the interest rates are so low right now, maybe is the reason they're all wanting more security too. Of course, this, you know, is the full faith of the county. Of course, the district, the ninety-six district, and, you know, twenty-two thousand acres of incumbents would be liable, of course, first.
Bernie, I don't remember seeing that language back by the full faith and credit. Is that to get a better interest rate? Is that what you're saying? I don't remember that being on a resolution before.
Yeah, we've had them, Chuck. I don't remember the last one. Maybe it was the last ninety-six project I came in for. It's a common practice.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's another level of security for whoever's going to underwrite the note that if something were to happen, if the drain commissioner runs off with the money and leaves a mess, that we're going to pick up the pieces. But as he pointed out, you know, what ultimately, you know, secures the project is the fact that we can put a lien on every property that the project takes place in the district. And so it's really, it essentially says if something were to happen at the drain commissioner level, then we would backstop that. So really kind of to save them from doing a lot of legal work.
Well, it just, it secures the lender. That's all it does.
Yeah, and so it makes sense because it'll save the taxpayers money because obviously the county is going to stand behind it one way or another.
Bernie, who bids this out? I mean, I see you up to eight oh five. Who bids this out? Is that something you do, or is that something the county does, or?
As far as the comp of cost or the bidding of the...
Bidding of the financing.
Clark Hill is the one that handles the financing. You know, it comes from me, but they do all the work of it.
But they'll look, they'll look at our local people if they want some of this or whatever.
Oh, sure, yes. And I'm always shopping. I mean, I mean, I shop. Actually, we have a lady that lends.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Okay, she's interested in this one because it's a short note. She wants short notes, you know? This is a, well, they call it a seven-year. It's really six payments. Twenty-twenty-seven it'll be done. So she's interested in bidding on this one. But, yeah, I would, I'm always looking for more bidders because obviously they're all in theory.
Yeah, I moved that we do this, back, the full faith backing of the county for this drain.
Support.
Move and supported. Do we have any other discussion?
Um... Well, I did have a question about a... No, I guess I'm not. Never mind.
Okay.
Jan, you can ask. If it comes to you, you can always get ahold of me, and I can try and answer, you know, whatever you have.
Yeah, well, it's kind of, let me ask you this. Last time we met, we okayed for spicers to come out and do the study in, and that's for this same project, right?
This Spicer is the engineer on this project. Yes, I guess I'm...
I didn't get a chance to, I was, yeah, I was going to look that up and see if it was the same, same one. And so have you talked to the residents or told them all about this, or who was it that...
Oh, sure, Jan. We've had meetings. I mean, this has been going on for a couple of years. I think you've had probably three or four of these notices go through your packet also. Yeah, this is, yeah, yeah, we've, everybody knows about it. And that's, like I say, Jan, we send out a letter, which I kind of started a couple of years ago, and it's called the prepayment letter, and that's where we've already had a hundred and five thousand paid on this note because by people paying ahead, they don't, they can save on interest is what it's all about.
Okay, when you do it, you do it just to the homeowners. You don't do it to the townships, right?
I do do it to the townships also, Jan, yes.
I talked to Kevin Beeson today, and he said he didn't know anything about it.
Um...
That's Pine River Township.
Wouldn't be Pine River Township.
Yes, it is.
There is a piece of Pine River in this.
Is it? Must be a corner of it.
Yeah, yeah. Jan, there again, we send these notices to all the dowjor boards. Maybe he just, I mean, I'm sure he knows about it.
Yeah.
Unless he hasn't been going to the township meetings or something, Jan.
No, he's the, he's the supervisor.
Well, there you go, so...
Supervisor's last to know, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering because when I was talking to him, he was surprised about it. Not surprised. He says they're always doing drain work, and, you know, it's a common thing and all of that. I was just a little surprised that he didn't know anything about it. They told me we were having a meeting tonight, and he said, "Well, you have to have, after all, like, usually go to spicers." And then, don't you have to have a public meeting first too before you start this?
Yes, yeah.
It's not, yeah, public meeting, yeah.
We have, yeah, we have, we have a board of determination. And that's where we probably had fifty, sixty, maybe, maybe a hundred. I can't remember. People attend, and that's where they brought problems in the district. And there again, this is a large district, Jan.
Yeah, I know, I realize that, yeah.
Brought in the complaints and the flood problems, and then we assigned it to Spicer. They're the ones that handled this district, and then they went out and tried addressing the flooding problems. And so that's where this is actually in about eight different locations spread out across the district, okay?
Okay. Well, that's why I was just kind of wondering. I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay.
So, well, if you get a chance, give them a call if you can.
I will, I will. I haven't talked to them a couple of months. I'll give them a call.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Do we have any other discussion? Having none, I'd ask the clerk to call a roll.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. Alrighty, moving on. Thank you, Bernie.
Yep, thanks, George. Thanks, Board.
Thanks, Greg.
Let's see.
Good luck, Tim.
Thanks.
I'll miss you.
Let's see, we got K five. I'm looking on my agenda here. Consideration to appoint planning commission, three-year term. Angie, help me out here.
We did have an application from Janelle Dunham. Am I on? Oh, yes.
Yep.
She is the mayor for Perrington Village, Village of Perrington.
Okay.
And then we also still have, I forgot the other name. Hold on. And the other person is Kathy Wilton. She was on the last meeting.
Okay. All right, and they've got openings for two or one?
One.
Okay, and that was, the Janelle Dunham was the one that... They recommended?
Yes.
The planning commission recommended Janelle Dunham, correct?
Correct.
All right, okay. Okay, so what's your pleasure, folks?
I would move we appoint Janelle Dunham to the planning commission.
Support. Move and supported. Any discussion? There are none. Ask the clerk to call a roll.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. Alrighty, moving on. Consideration of PTO carryover. I imagine that's tricky.
Yeah, I just want to run this idea by you. A couple of union contract cycles ago, and Tim will certainly remember this, and George, the unions agreed to our request that we cap the PTO hours that can be carried over from year to year from essentially no limitation down to two-hundred-and-forty hours. Among other things, this helped address an issue that the auditors had been bringing up many years running. The unions worked with us. They agreed to a payout for hours over two-hundred-and-forty that they had at the end of the year. Now, this year, because of the shutdown and COVID-related, no one could go anywhere. So it was a different year for using leave time. As a result, we have a greater number of staff that are approaching the end of the year with larger balances. So to give you some numbers, and this does not include the sheriff's department because they're a different animal and they're handling things differently. Currently, we have twenty-one employees with over two-hundred-and-forty hours of PTO, twenty-one. At this time last year, there were just thirteen employees with over two-hundred-and-forty hours. Of the twenty-one this year, it's an, folks would be sacrificing some seven-hundred-and-fifty-four hours of leave time. It's considerable. Last year, the sacrifice was just five-hundred-and-sixty-three. So we're in no way bound by our union contract to do this or by policy. This is something that I thought I'd pitch the idea to you. I'd just like to hear your thoughts about this and get a decision from you. Without Tim accusing me always of giving stuff away without negotiating, so...
And we would, and we would need a letter of agreement in order to make any change to this because it is changing the parameters of the contract. But my, the only thing that I thought of, and I expressed to Tracy, was, and it has been an unusual year for everybody. And, you know, we've asked a lot of our employees anyway. And so as long as it works with department heads, you know, because we don't want to leave departments understaffed because too many people are taking PTO. I didn't see a problem with it, you know, if it's something that the department heads felt that they could make work in our elected officials.
I'll leave as subject to department head approval. You know, we could put more parameters around it, but as a general concept, you know, employees don't just get to take it and announce it, you know, department heads technically need to approve leave.
So Tracy, you're proposing that for a given period of time, we allow this to happen, or?
That we allow, that we allow a carryover in excess of two-hundred-and-forty hours this year only. This year only. And tying it to the COVID situation so that, you know, it doesn't come back as, well, you let us do it last year, so...
All right. Well, we're coming to the end of the year. So what do you think, folks?
I have a couple of thoughts. Am I, let's see if I'm muted here, whatever. Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. I mean, we, few years ago, we paid all this overtime to wrap that up and get everybody even. Is that right?
Yeah.
Correct. We did a payout, and I think, I don't know if it was at a hundred percent, Tim, wasn't it at like seventy-five percent?
Yeah, it was at a reduced amount. Yeah, and it was either two or three years ago. I can't remember, but yes, we...
Well, my concern about it is that, I mean, we've been closed, the courthouse has been closed. When you look at the public, we've been closed quite a while. And the public has suffered somewhat in this from trying to get, I know they've taken care of business, but it's been a lot of work for the public to do business at the courthouse and work around this. And I think we paid people to stay home, is my understanding. Is that right? Am I right also?
We paid people to stay home to work at home for those that really didn't have, you know, full-time work from home. The condition was that they be, during working hours, they be on-call and immediately available. But there was a lot of work going on from home.
I know there's a lot of work going on, but I can't believe that everybody stayed home and was by their phone or doing, you know, and then when you use the excuse, you couldn't go anywhere. I mean, you couldn't go downtown Ithaca or anywhere in the state of Michigan, but half the world's open, you know? I mean, it's just whether you chose to travel or not. I don't, I have a hard time with carrying these over, I think, sometimes. You know, I think about that, and I think that everybody suffered a little bit here, and they've had an opportunity to use them if they just would have stayed home, if they wanted to stay home and not take a vacation or whatever. You know, hey, it's kind of how I feel about it.
Well, to use leave time, let me just comment on this. Whether or not you think the governor's executive orders were lawful, you know, it doesn't matter. They were in effect. So for folks to have gone anywhere for a certain period of time would have been violating an executive order. And to this very day, if someone chooses to travel, they are not adhering to the advice that we're getting about how to slow the spread of the virus. Now, I fully recognize people are still traveling, but there are some who are not.
I mean, you got, you got the state of Indiana is open, you got Florida is open. You've got other states that are open. I mean, our governor's just been a little tougher, I think, or just a little goofier, I think, but... I don't, I... I thought we paid these out, we were kind of under the impression you were going to use it or lose it type of thing. You know, that's what the auditors wanted us to be at.
Now, I have to agree with Mr. Smith or Commissioner Smith. And I got to tell you, I'm working with a lot, I'm working at three different schools, and there are people taking vacations by plane, so you can take time off and go on vacation. Talked to a girl yesterday, and she's going to Arizona. Her whole family is, and by plane. And so I don't think that's a, I don't think we should start changing the rules. And I don't think, I think, and I have a lot of friends who are working from home, but, I mean, they're, I mean, you're not really working as hard as you would be if you were in an office.
Chuck, you got anything?
Um, just listening to the discussion.
Okay. No opinion one way or the other.
I'm trying to decide.
Okay. Well, the only thing that comes to mind is that we're trying to work with a lot of folks that have school issues. In other words, I don't believe that some of our, I know Elma's grade school is still in session, but I don't know, I don't think Ithaca's is.
St. Louis is.
St. Louis is?
St. Louis and Brecken, yeah, and Breckenridge is too.
So it's just Ithaca that's completely closed?
Yeah, and the grade schools' grades are open, but the high school is closed.
Okay.
And Mount Pleasant is closed. Mount Pleasant, younger kids are closed.
Okay, so we've got a couple of instances that we have grade school kids that parents work at the courthouse. And so childcare comes into, comes into thought, and they have to stay, you know, home because of that. But I guess, you know, you can, you can say one way or another about that one too, so I don't know.
Well, let me add, let me add this onto it too. You know, I think everybody at the courthouse is extremely lucky because look at the restaurants that are going out of business and can't open up. And look at all of the other businesses that are closed and cannot, and that probably never reopen. There's a lot of your demands, or some of the hairdressers are not reopening. There was a lady that opened up a business in Elma. It was takeout only, and she's closed because of not enough business. So, you know, at least at the courthouse, they still have paychecks coming. There are a lot of people... So, you know, at least at the courthouse, they still have paychecks coming, there are a lot of people, not only do they not have a paycheck, but they don't have money for groceries, and they, and they're not buying their children gifts this year, and I think if anything, they should take that money and donate it to somebody for their kids to have with Christmas, so, we have to.
Okay, well, all right, I've listened to a lot of discussion here, I think it's going to be status quo, and I, so, I don't believe that, unless somebody wants to make a motion, I don't believe that we're, that this board is willing to take any action on that. So, if I, if something's different, please tell me before I move on, because I don't think we need, nobody wants to take any action. Okay, moving on, the finance committee.
Now, there's one additional issue, I believe. I'm just pointing out to you that, and this is just FYI only, the issue of the claim for attorney fees from Charles Lawler has not gone away. I've simply included for you the most recent communication from Mr. Lawler, as well as the original letter that we sent, in which we recited our understanding of the law. In each communication, I asked him for citation to other law that might suggest a different outcome, and he's not been able to provide any. I believe that he's actually, you know, his responses now are kind of resorting to insults, so, it's just because it's ongoing, and the tone is, you know, a tad unpleasant, I'm just, just wanting to make sure you have the latest information, so.
I think I remember telling you guys that this was not going to go away, probably this next year, you guys are going to be in court, so.
It's okay.
Do as you have.
Okay. You want to ride together with us, Sam?
No, I better not, because I'm on their side, not your side. I should say Michelle's side, so.
Okay.
But I'll wait, but I will wave to you.
Okay. All right, finance.
Okay, with that, we'll call the finance committee, commission, excuse me, finance committee meeting to order, financial administrators report, Chris.
Hey, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Start off with our usual reports that we have, you see here, our cash balances for our general fund, going for tax revolving fund, tax sales fees, and the residence denial interest fund. I'm happy to report, just shortly after we made our, our large OPEB payment, this was, we, we still have our largest cash balances that we've had in recent history. Which is just a good time to plug that, with the, the drain note that Bernie's going to be issuing, the county will be on the hook for about 10% of that, I believe. So, if you want to put some of this money to good use, paying off that $80,000 note before we accrue interest, not a bad idea, I think you said we had till December 20-ish, 21st?
23rd.
Thank you, Bernie. So, anybody have any questions?
When you look at, Chris, when you look at paying that off, what, how does our obligation come to that, is, is that what, we're using the drain, or is that our percentage, or how does, how does that work the way we owe Bernie?
That is in the drain statute, the, the MCLs, that the counties contribute 10% of the cost of maintaining or creating the new drains.
So, that's spread out over the whole county, I mean, that money comes from everybody in the county then?
The county government pays 10%, so Grasha County, us, the courthouse.
If you, we recall, Sam, wasn't that a while ago, we paid a large amount to?
Yeah, I remember that, I just didn't know, I, it, it's just, it's a, it's a rule that we pay 10%, it's just a rule, it's not, not based on what we use, or not, not to do it on the drain.
Yeah, kind of the idea is that, is that, you know, this is the, you know, that there's a general public benefit for a drain project beyond the adjacent property owners, and they pay for that when they pay their regular taxes, and we just pay it, you know, out of the general fund, but I do think, you know, as Chris just pointed out, and, and, you know, maybe something that we want to do as an action item coming out of this meeting, that, you know, because we're in a financial position where we can pay it, you know, not only are we avoiding interest, but we're also, you know, prepaying a debt obligation, which is means that, you know, we're, we're doing a better job of, you know, managing our money, so.
It'll look good for, it'll look good for the lenders.
That's right, it'll look good to lenders.
That's right. Okay, thanks, Chris.
No, thank you. Okay, if we don't have any other questions or comments, I'm going to go over to the schedule of revenues, expenditures, and transfers. And here we see for November 2020, an increase in revenues compared to what we saw in the prior year, which leads me to believe that more people are able to pay their taxes on a timely basis compared to a year ago. If you have any questions or comments, let me know, otherwise, we will go over to the bills. Not sure why I'm struggling here. We have our two typical presentations, checks over $10,000. Did that pop up on your screen for you?
No, it hasn't.
It hasn't popped up, Chris, but if everybody just refers to, this is, he's looking at B2 in your packet.
There we go. For some reason, it didn't show up in available
There you go.
Excel sheets this year, one thing that you will notice is the amount for the month was around $785,000. Typically, in our governmental activities, we spend somewhere between 1 and 1.3 million in a typical month. Reason for that is we didn't have a check run during Thanksgiving week, that got paid the next week, so we had three weeks where we paid bills, and the fourth week, we, we made a couple payments for like credit cards and things like that, that were due, but for the most part, everything got pushed into the first week of this year. As I was going through here, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. I'd jump over to I think I just have too many things open right now.
Whoa. I see your screen. We see it.
There we go, that should do it, right?
There you go, there you go.
Okay, sorry about that again. If anybody has any questions about any of the payments that were made.
I do, on page eight, for senior Grasha, what is that? Oh, is that Commissioner Agent Senior?
What is the amount?
Oh, let me see here, let me get a ruler.
Or about how much, that'll get me.
Uh, 1,082.
Well, senior Grasha.
That'd be the, the senior center. We, we ran out the senior center for various things, and yes, that would be through COA.
Any other questions on?
I was, I had another question, but I can't find it, so.
Well, senior Grashit is for this, isn't it, is that for the printing of the newsletter, Chris?
That's what they call senior Grashit.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look that up, while, while you do the treasurer's report and report back to you.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that might, might be what it is though, that seems like about the right amount to print a run of that. Okay, any other questions on the checks? If not, we'll move on.
Okay, go ahead.
Am I going to move on to the pension fund statement, or?
Yep, I, I thought, and then we'll, we'll, well, let's have you finish, and then we'll, we'll go to the treasurer.
My apologies.
Sorry, I'm going out of words, my, my bad, I'm, I'm not following the, the agenda.
Well, I wanted to just share with you quickly the most recent fiscal year-end statement from from MERS for our pension fund, you'll see we our balance at 630, June 30th was 29 million, just under 29 million dollars. We paid benefits of about $500,000 over the last, over those three months. Investment income, a little over 1.5 million, so our end balance is at $30 million as of September 30th, 2020. $30 million is typically the target, where we want to be at, that, that gets us about 100% funded, a little bit over 100% funded, so anytime you see that $30 million ending balance, that should make you smile.
That's good news.
Yep.
And I wanted to, I put together in the packet, a memo of our actuary report for OPEB fund. I included the actuary report too, but if it's all right with the board, I'd just like to go over these specific numbers to simplify things, to show you what we got, I did a comparison between where we stood last year and where we stood this year. Obviously, the thing that sticks out, our liability last year was 2.6 million, this year is 4.6 million. Our amount in the fund, the value of the fund, 1.25 million last year, 2.05 million this year, we made the $750,000 deposit, and we have about $50,000 in appreciation. Our liability not funded went from 3 point, or 1.3 million to 2.5. And then, just a quick explanation, actuaries project how much money our fund is going to make, and what we want to do is, we want to have enough money in there to make enough money to pay those people that we owe the money to. However, right now, we have, we're invested in stable investments, so they're not going to project that we're making a lot of money in this fund right now. And last year, when they came up with a total liability, they over, overlooked the fact that we were in stable investments, and assumed we were in essentially stock market investments, which the acceptable return of rate for that is 7.5%. So, that's why we're seeing it go from 2.6 to 4.6 million dollars. Now, this is just I hate to say it, but it's, it's kind of a made up number. We are at some point planning on moving this money into the stock market or into more aggressive investments, we just didn't think at the time that we created this, that it was proper to do it until we were fully funded, that was our goal, get fully funded, don't lose any money in the market, and go from there, so, our goal is still to be in the 2.3 to 2.6 million dollar total funded in that trust fund, because once we switch the investments from stable to more aggressive, our liability is going to drop, because the actuaries' calculation is going to change, and you see the difference in that calculation right here. 2.6 million is our liability. If we use the 7.5% more aggressive, 4.6 million is the calculation when they use the 1.5% investment return. So, while our liability went up, we're still doing a great job of putting the money away that we wanted to put away, and when we're ready to invest it differently, our liability will drop.
When, when, when will that decision be made, Chris?
That decision can only be made by the board.
Right. So, do we get, do we get advice on this, do we get, you know, I mean, we, we have, I mean, it's mirrors is handling this, and their, their funds or whatever?
MERS will not tell us, will not give us advice on what to invest in, I think we tried to ask for some of that guidance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, nobody wants to, nobody wants to tell you, you know, what to do, because if it, if, if then it goes down, like, for example, if she would have told us, yeah, it's safe to put in the market, you know, we would have been screaming at her, you know, after the March crash day, we just lost 40% of our money, you know, you told us to put it in the market, and of course, then if we were to rode it out, you know, we, we'd have most of it back, but I think what, and this is going to be something that the board has to think about in the future, I think what our thought was, and this is kind of what a lot of people would advise us to do, as, and it's really Chris pointed out, is, is our goal was first to get, get our, the money that we needed, you know, which, you know, the target was about 2.3 million, you know, rather than, you know, start, you know, investing, you know, the first 500,000, and then, you know, have a good analysis, and it's like, right, well, now we got to make up for that, plus, you know, you know, it's kind of like, let's get our, let's get our prepayment for, if you will, you know, our kind of base funding established, but we're almost there, you know, and in fact, in theory, you could say, well, you know, if we wanted to now, I mean, we could start shifting that allocation, because, yeah, I mean, the, the liability, as Chris pointed out, isn't a made up number, you know, they're going to take, you know, they're, they're going to, they're going to, right now, they're saying, well, you're, you know, you've got it in super safe stuff, so you're only going to get 1.5% per year, so, you know, your, your money is going to double, you know, every 50 years, and so, you need more money. Well, if we put it into equities, you know, then the multiplier's 10, so your money's going to double every 10 years, so now you're fine, you know, so really, you know, and, and then, and that then remains the case until it starts going up and down, and then it keeps changing based on, you know, how much, how much we have, but you know, it, it's been, you know, a million bucks since we, we're close to half a million bucks since we put that money in there, so, you know, that is a decision that the board will have to make at some point, and then, the board will have to decide how they want to allocate that. And it might be a good idea to have our MERS rep come back in and just kind of talk about the, the options again, even though she won't tell us what to put it in.
That might be something to do after the first of the year.
You give me a month, and I will reach out. If you want to do February, March, April, you let me know, May.
I, I guess I'd like to see how this government settles down for the first quarter.
Have a, have a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, March sounds good to me, I can
Yeah.
It's, I, I'd like to plan this out as much as I could in advance.
Do you think, Chris, we ought to take a look at this, see how this thing going to work out here for a few months?
I have no idea. I have no expectations. I do not know what will happen. But yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, and I, and I think one of the things we talked about doing, once we kind of established our fund, because, you know, nobody can time the market and nobody is gonna try and tell you that, you know, they can guarantee when it's gonna go up or down. And so you may want to decide that, all right, once you hit, you know, once you've full, kind of fully funded, you know, the amount you're going to put in, in OPEB, you know, then you just, you set up your schedule ahead of time, you know, rather than try and look at it, you say, all right, we're gonna make a twenty percent payment and, you know, in June, we're gonna make, you know, we're gonna move twenty percent in June, we're gonna make, move twenty percent in August, we're gonna move twenty percent in October, you know, you just set up a ladder and, and ladder it in and you know, and I know, I know John's coming in with investment experience and so I'm sure he'll have some, some good thoughts on that. But, you know, cause, cause you just, you won't be able to, you know, you know, you, 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 you'd feel terrible if, if you put it in and the market crashed thirty percent a month later, you know, and then you'd say, why didn't we wait a month and you know, and of course, if you don't put it all in, then it'll go up thirty percent, and you'll say, man, why didn't we put it all in? But if you dollar cost average it over time, you know, you'll get about the average over a long period of time, and that's probably the best you can hope for.
Yeah, and I'll make a note to, um, get that investment packet that she brought last year, her, a year and a half ago, and I can have that ready for John.
Any other questions and comments for Chris and the OPEB liability?
I would like to just say, um, OPEB is the other post-employment benefits, because I do believe he is listening, and I don't think I, I know you guys are familiar with it because we talk about it a lot, but other post-employee benefits that Grashit County promises to their retirees. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, I think that's it for you, Chris, right?
Uh, yes, sir. I do believe, um, just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Lambrecht. I probably would not be here if you were not on the board. In all honesty, I still remember reaching out to you after seeing this position was available to talk to you about it.
And I told you what, what a great job it was, right? And, uh, and I didn't steer you wrong.
Yes, you told me that there was, uh, it was a great job because it didn't exist. It was not in existence at the time.
That's right, you know, and, and I told you, you would be the best financial administrator we ever had. And I was right.
So far.
I was right. You are so far.
If, uh, if you ever need a job, yeah, another job in the future. Come see me.
Will do, will do. Thanks, Chris. Okay, treasurer. I think I thought, I thought Michelle, there, yep, there's Michelle. And, and Michelle.
Pardon?
Oh, I was just going to tell everyone, if you, if you didn't, uh, check your email, and Michelle did, uh, forward everything. You know, what was weird COVID and everything, she wasn't able to get stuff in in time for the board packet, but she did send out her reports via email. And if you check your email, they are there if you haven't seen them.
Yeah. And now I just talking, you guys talking about the COVID and the schools and the parents needing to be home, I just kind of have a little humorous thing from today. Uh, my kids go to Ithaca, so they are home, they're closed down. And we're homeschooling and this is why parents need to stay with their children, because one of the assignments was for science class was to make Play-Doh. So flour, sugar, salt, everything. I could only imagine what my kitchen would look like if I wasn't here.
I can't hear her.
Play-Doh. And that's, and this is what it looks, and this is what my kitchen still looks like. I
Good work.
It's a mess. So yes, these, these kids need a supervision while they're home. So in my upcoming departure, it's, it'll be good that I'm home with them. So, um, same reports that I always sent, deposits for the month, the investments and the bank transfers. Um, that's not the ordinary. I don't have any thing to bring to light. Um, if anybody has any questions.
No, I, I didn't do anything, but does anyone have any questions on any of those reports?
No.
I didn't get a chance. Switched over, um, phones yet, but I'm hoping to be able to keep my same phone number when I do turn in the county phone. Um, I would still be available for questions. Um, but I know Chris and Kelly can access pretty much everything that I could, so. Yeah, things should just roll smoothly.
Excellent. Jan, did you have a question? I, I think I couldn't, did you, did you have something you?
No, I just said I, I hadn't had a chance to see the report that she sent, but that's okay. If I have a question, I can call the officer and ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Jan, for your, um, support.
You're welcome. Hey, by the way, I had called your office because, um, uh, Mr. Murphy and also, uh, Mr. Littlerman wanted to see that bond, that ten point five million dollars. When I asked Kelly about it, she could not find it in your office. So before.
It's there, it's.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's in my file cabinet.
Okay, if you could make a copy for these guys, that'd be great. Then, or just, yeah, that'd probably be the best thing. You could just send it on to them.
The, the MERS bond?
The, the.
For the turbines, the wind turbine.
Yeah, the wind turbines.
Oh, the de, oh, the decommissioning bond. Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, you keep going in and out. So I'm not sure if you hear me, but I, I can't hear you on all this stuff. I just mentioned, yeah, if you could just send it on to them, that'd be great. A copy of.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to return to the full board meeting for the purpose of paying the bills.
So moved.
Moved by Smith. Or support by Murphy. Angie, if you could take the role, please?
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes. And then George, I don't know if you want to add, if we, if we want to discuss prepaying that drain bond, um, since Chris has brought it up?
Yeah, we can do that. Okay. All right. So we're back in session here and we'll just go right into if, uh, what's the board think about prepaying that drain bond? We can save quite a bit of interest if we do.
I'd support that.
Can we think about it and table it till the next meeting?
Uh, we can, I don't think, because if I understand right, and Bernie's still on the call, Bernie, our deadline is December.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Yeah. Uh, it's Jan, what, it's not gonna be any different than if we waited. The, the, the difference is that we could save quite a bit of interest if we pay it now. We gotta pay it at some time.
Well, I'm, yeah, I, I contacted an attorney about a lot of money out through the county and they were gonna get back with me and they've tried to call.
But this has nothing to do with that. This, this has nothing to do with that. This is a common practice that we have to, we, we owe on any open drain, it's called the drain at large, ten percent. And this is coming up, and if we wanted to pay our portion of ten percent, if we did it now, we would save the interest.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking, I was thinking we were talking about something else. Okay, I would go along with that. How much does that, how much would that be then? Altogether, would we pay?
About eighty-seven.
Yeah, around eighty thousand dollars. Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't hear.
But we save the taxpayers' interest. That's what we're doing.
Right. And, and again, we're, we're eliminating a, a, a liability because normally if we carry this thing for the life of the drain, we just have that, you know, it's kind of like a house payment. We've got it on our books and it's just nibbling away at us. And this way, we just, we pay it off and we're done with it.
Well, we're not getting any interest for our money.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to, you know, for the treasurer to invest money at, you know, point six percent interest, and we're paying three percent on a, on a drain, even a three percent. Uh, no, no, Bernie, I just made that number up, but three percent is a great rate, if that's what we get, but it's, it's still worth it.
But there's no sense, the county taxpayers incurring, uh, interest payment if we don't need to. And at this point, we don't need to do that. We can just pay it.
We have the capital and, and I make a motion, we pay it.
To support.
Motion moved and supported that we go ahead and pay that ten percent on the drain. Uh, then another discussion. Hearing none, I'd ask Angie to call the role.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. All right, uh, is anybody on the line, Matt, for a public comment?
George, I get in and Sheriff.
Oh, yep, yep. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, uh, you know, I just wanted to thank Tim for, um, his years of service. And, um, a second here. There we go. Let me just get out of my video here. Anyways, I'd like to thank Tim for his years of service, um, to the board and, um, you know, I've only been the sheriff for eighteen months, but what I've learned from him in those eighteen months, um, I'll take with me for a long time in contract negotiations. I was always on the other side of the table for those negotiations and I was never a union steward. So what he taught me and the negotiations that we had uh, will not be forgotten. So thank you, Tim, for your service and I appreciate working with you in the last eighteen months.
Thanks, Mike. It, you know, it's been a pleasure. You're one of those elected officials that I said, it's just, it's been one of the best parts of my job.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And, uh, one other thing, this is for Sam. Sam, um, you know, I had some employees that, uh, ended up with too much vacation and, and, um, but my employees don't get it all at one time. They get it on their anniversary date. So what I did is I just entered into a verbal agreement with the union, a letter of agreement, um, that I was gonna allow them to, they had to have them used by the end of this year. But I had some people that got them like in, um, October, November of last year on their anniversary date and had like vacations planned in Florida for March and April. And then they canceled their vacation. So now they got two weeks vacation that they didn't use over the summer because they couldn't go nowhere. And so, uh, they've slowly spent it down, but, um, it was just a matter of just a few days, but I did allow that in the sheriff's office. Nothing like what the hours Tracy was talking about, though. That's all I got. Thank you.
But on the other hand, Mike, the bulk of your people, I mean, we didn't, we didn't close the sheriff's department.
That's correct, yes.
You know, I mean, I'm just looking at people that, that went home and, and some worked a day a week, some worked two days a week. And it was rough for people who had to do business with the county to, you know, to get in there. I mean, I think the business got done and we, we got it taken care of. But there was a lot of staff that was, that was home. I think that we were paying if they, if they were exposed, I think they went home for fourteen day quarantine, we probably paid them. Um, everything rolled right along and, but your department, I think, is different. I, I see those cars rolling every day. I, I put a lot of miles on it. I see them out there running around.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why I granted that to my employees is because that they are an essential employee and, um, you know, I didn't want to take vacation days from them when they got denied them or not denied, but they took them back in March and April, so.
One question for you, Mike. Have you heard anything on the vaccine yet about when, uh, the sheriff's department might see that?
Yeah, we were supposed to actually start getting it today or tomorrow and Friday, George. And, uh, we've been pushed back to next week. So we should have it either Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday. Uh, and we have a sign up list for our officers and corrections officers that they can go over to Carson City Hospital and get it. Um, if not, it will be the week of New Year's, but, uh, we'll have it within the next two weeks and anybody can get it. And I'm gonna lead by example. I'm gonna get it, so.
Good. I, I encourage everybody that has a chance to get that to do it. Uh, I think it's, I think it's, it's, it's a good thing for not only yourself, but for the others around you, so.
Right. And then we have to go back three weeks to the day to get the second shot. Um, so we'll go after the first year and get the second round, but so, yeah, I had, uh, uh, the other day when I was, noticed the list, there was probably fifteen that had signed up already, so. So we're gonna get that done and, and, uh, hopefully we can get by this.
Well, good. I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad they're right on it, because I was, I was kind of curious about how that was gonna work for you.
Yeah, I was pretty excited. I thought I might be one of the first ones in the state to get it if I was gonna get it today or tomorrow or Friday. But, uh, no, not till next week now, it appears, so.
Okay. Well, you're gonna get it, so that's a good thing.
Right.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, you're welcome. Uh, Matt, is there anybody else?
Yep, we've got, uh. I just had one thing. I just wanted to echo Tracy's and Mike's sentiments and everybody else. Uh, thank you to Commissioner Tim Lambrecht for all of his years of service. Um, appreciate some of the things that he helped out when I, back when I was EM and stuff like that. So again, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just briefly, Tim, um, I, you know, I learned a lot about county government from you and I didn't have you as a teacher, you know, but, uh, but I'll, I'll still be seeing you down the road. We'll still take those trips to Port Huron and stuff.
That's right. That's right.
I'd like to also say thank you to Tim too. I've been on the board two different times. I mean, I've been on the board, been on two different times. And, uh, it was fun to be with you and, and talk over things and even went to some of the meetings that you were at, so, um, wish you well.
Thank you, Jan.
Okay, is there anybody else?
If we would, if we would have met in person, I would have brought cookies, you guys, to everybody.
Right, because you're the treat, you're the treat lady, you know, I mean, we, you're, you know, you're a party planner.
Oh, I am. I took cookies, I took cookies to my townships and they were closed, so I took them all to the post office. And then who else did I buy cookies for? Somebody else, I took it to them. Anyway, I'll still take cookies to the townships in January, but yeah. They enjoy them and it's fun to do it.
Okay. Well, we're, we've exhausted our agenda and, uh, unless anything else, anyone else has anything to bring, I'll ask, uh, a motion to adjourn.
So moved. It's fine.
We are adjourned. Thank you.